Everyone, I call the council meeting for seven o'clock on Thursday, June the twenty-sixth. Order this meeting, as you can see, is being broadcast live on local cable channel thirteen oh three and streamed online at www.bucksportmaine.gov by clicking watch meetings under the town council section. Questions or comments may be submitted during the meeting by emailing slassard@bucksportmaine.gov or by calling two zero seven three zero seven eight zero three zero during the meeting. Looks like we have most of the people here have done this before, so I'm gonna skip the turn your cellphone off, speak at the podium, the microphones pick you up speech. Um, roll call.
Good evening.
Hello.
Deputy Mayor Eastman.
He is absent, excuse us.
Councillor Tarian.
Present.
Councillor Hare.
Here.
Mayor Bissonnet.
You nailed it.
Oh, yes. Councillor Rabs.
Present.
Councillor Bishop.
Present.
And Councillor Rankin.
Present.
Thank you. And I'm sure we will be discussing a meeting, Kelly, here in just a little bit. Um, next on the agenda. I haven't been looking forward to this, but here we are. Um, recognition of retirement of Town Manager Sue Lassard. Anyone wanna go first?
Well, there was.
I know, I'm happy to go first.
Break the ice.
Yep, happy to do so. Uh, I'll be speaking, whoa. Here comes some adornments for.
We had words when I saw the agenda.
Uh, as I mentioned, I haven't been looking forward to this, uh, but I am looking forward to it for Sue. Sue, if you don't know this, was hired as our interim town manager, uh, back in twenty fifteen. Um, and nine years later, here we are. Um, I'm gonna have the opportunity to speak, um, for Sue over the coming days. So I will, um, try to keep my comments this evening limited to kind of council-only stuff. Um, my experience with Sue as a councillor has been a great one. I'll give you an anecdote. When I ran for the council in twenty eighteen, if you happen to remember anything that I ran on, one of the things that I ran on was that I had had just about enough of Wilson Hall. I didn't wanna hear about Wilson Hall anymore. I didn't wanna look at Wilson Hall anymore. I was tired of hearing about people who thought they could rehab Wilson Hall, and they made every promise they could and never didn't follow through. And if I never heard about Wilson Hall again, I'd have been the happiest citizen in the town of Bucksport you ever saw. And the night before I was, uh, the night I was to be sworn in, I was driving home, uh, preparing to come to this meeting, and Sue Lassard called me. She said, "I'd just like you to know that, um, we have somebody interested in Wilson Hall." And I was prepared to say something I'm not gonna say for broadcast. And she said, "And it's Larry Wall." And, and, and at that moment, I said, "Oh." Well, that changes my opinion on everything. And I really appreciated that phone call in that moment, and I realized that I was dealing with a professional because she had paid attention. She knew that that was something that was, uh, had been on my mind for the better part of, uh, several years. And she gave me a heads up, and she gave me other heads up, too. That, that was quite an eventful night, but she made sure to let me know that. And ever since then, that has been the theme. Um, she has been extraordinarily open, um, and, um, careful with advice, but not, also not afraid to give it. And I think that comes with the experience of, of the job. I have doubted myself at times, and she has reined that in, and I appreciate that. Um, I think at one point, I don't think she'd mind me saying this, she says, "I oftentimes have to play mu- the mother figure with, with some of you." And, uh, so there, there's been a couple of times where she's given me a little bit of a confidence boost, and I certainly appreciate that. Um, over the coming days, I'll, I'll be speaking quite a lot about the impact of Sue Lassard on our community. But I will say in terms of when you look at a council and you look at the relationship, especially if you've been in Bucksport for a while, for example, between us and the RSU, or just the council and the town manager in general. This is a council, um, who I'll, I love to advocate for the people on this council. This is a great council, um, and one of the reasons we're a great council, and one of the reasons that we're able to think outside the box at times, and one of the reasons that we're not afraid to take a chance is because we know that A, Sue is going to be there to rein us in if, if need be, but also support us and say, "Okay, let's see what we can do." And, um, I can speak to a number of examples of that, but I won't bore you, um, this evening, 'cause I'll, I'll just bore you tomorrow with it. Um, anyway, um, I've had the pleasure of being the chairman of the school board in this town. I've had the pleasure of now being the mayor, um, without question. Um, the most supportive relationship that I have had in terms of being in a role like that and knowing somebody is there doing the job and doing the work, um, with some really good people, um, good superintendents. But Sue takes the cake. It's not even close. Um, and those other people would agree with me, I'm sure. So, um, I'll stop there, except to say, uh, that, uh, I wish you the absolute very best and, um, offer on behalf of the town of Bucksport, um, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll add a couple of comments there, too, for, uh, sitting now on the council. Uh, I'll, I'll also say that, uh, when I first met Sue, I was her employee. And, um, to work for her and to technically have her work for us. She has always been the same, um, regardless of what seat I've sat in or where I was. She's always been very, very helpful, and I can tell you that she's been a fierce advocate for our employees. And, um, that's trickled down to be very beneficial for the town. Sitting where I sit on the council, seeing, uh, things in a different perspective, I almost appreciate it more than I did when I worked for it because she truly cares about her employees, and she'll be the first to tell you that they're hers. And, uh, no one's, no one's gonna mess with them without getting through her first. And that's done very well for our, our employee retention. It's done very well for our morale, and, uh, it's been good for the town. And, uh, just, uh, I remember when she first arrived here, working as a police officer. Uh, Chief Gagin at the time, we'd been on a roller coaster. We'd been through quite a bit. And, uh, we, we were, we're kind of bracing for impact, like, here we go again. This is, this is gonna be pretty wild, and I... Anybody that can, can calm Chief Gagin down, uh, is, is, is a big deal.
She's got.
And she's, and, and, uh, she, she did that very well and, uh, really just took care of us then and now. And, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful for that, very thankful for you and everything you've done for us.
I, I just, um, this is my second time on council. The first time around, um, I sat down with Sue just about every Tuesday morning. We had an unofficial meeting. And, um, I didn't come from a, I, I came from a sales environment in the industrial world, and coming into town council was certainly different. And she gave me a lot of, she shared with me her experience, the advice that was given. I was able to be her wingman, getting started with, uh, Maine Municipal Association, and then went off and flew on my own, thanks to her, but, uh, and to this day, I like, uh, being part of that. Many of you don't, may remember, but my wife Leslie was on, uh, got involved with the town, too. She was, uh, so supportive. Anyway, one word on retirement. There's a, and you know I can be a little sarcastic at times, but...
No.
Yeah, just a tad, but, uh... When it comes to retirement, the most difficult part of not doing anything is knowing when you're finished.
So I, I, I don't need to repeat much of this stuff, but I wanted to sort of think about, um, sort of, there's this list of things that you have done. Um, but a few things are, some of the, a lot of the staff that are here today were, were Sue hires. Um, our parade of lights, um, that was done under your tenure. Uh, the video streaming of our council meetings back in twenty seventeen, that was also done under your tenure. So I feel like, um, it goes without saying that you've made a huge impact on the town. I, I was talking to city manager of Ellsworth the other day, and the first thing he said to me was, "I'm sorry you're losing your town manager," and he was, he is also losing his mentor. So I think what a lot of folks may not know is Sue mentors a lot of other municipalities around the state, and I run into them in my day job, and someone will say, "You must know the Sue Lassard," kind of, know her a little bit. So I think, um, I think you've done a really wonderful job at putting Bucksport in front of a lot of people, and, um, I think the town's better for it. I think you've brought a lot of really wonderful employees, um, to the town. And, uh, I think that's probably for me, the biggest legacy is the crew that'll be leading our town forward, um, were most, mostly your hires, with the exception of Police Department, of course.
Public safety was here before me and will be here after me. But it, it actually doesn't look very good that every other department head has been, has changed under my tenure. And it's not because I was necessarily a mean girl, maybe in one or two examples, but not consistently. But because a lot of our personnel were in the same age group, and everyone hit retirement at a, in a pretty close timeframe, but, um... When I came here to be an interim, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, and I've said it before, I'm ashamed to know what I didn't know, which was what a community really was. I've managed towns that are really good towns, really great towns, and they've done really good things, but I've never been in a place where a community is a verb, and it is here. And so the thing I think I am most proud of are the people that I've given a chance. We've hired incredible people, and, and many have come to us with no experience in what they're now doing. I can teach any skill set, but I can't teach character. I can't teach heart. I, I can't teach commitment. And if you can find people that have those qualities, that just need a chance. They need an opportunity. They need someone to let them in the door, and then they will learn to fly and help them learn to fly. The first day I hired Jacob Gray, and he told me he wanted my job. And I, absolutely. And you know what I said? "You give me four years and, and I'll help you." Get, because in, in my mind, helping young people get into a profession that has, is characterized by a lot of old people, like me, that the manager pool is not deep or huge because it's a job that comes with, if you have kids or if you have families, you, you read about how awful you are on social media and in the paper. And every election, every election brings with it the chance that you will not have a job. That's what this position, that's what this is. If you, if the councils change, would, uh, that's how it goes. Now, I've lived that way for forty-five years. And it, crazy as it sounds, I've never worried about... You can't do the job like you're scared of losing it. And I never have, but... But if you're thinking of trying to talk someone into going into this profession, it would, there are people who would say, "Yeah, I'm not doing that." You're not gonna put me on the front page of everything that's gone wrong, but...
In fact, I think more than once you've told me, "Oh, well, fire me."
Which is, because the talent pool is this, that, the truth is, if they did, I'd have a job before I was out of the building. And that's, that's not ego. It's just, it's just the state of the universe at this point. But the reality is that Bucksport is a great community. You are, unless you've been anywhere else, you don't know how fortunate you are. And that's, I... Some of my staff have gone out to help other, come back with their eyes like this, and it's like, "I told you, this is, it is not..." All ships do not run the same way, and we've... But this, this community has generations of leadership that have done this, generations that have done good work. I, I came at a, at a low point for the community, but nobody, nobody was acting like it was. Everybody was just acting like, "What are we gonna do next? Are we gonna fix this? What are we gonna do?" So I am, I am so proud of the way the elected officials in this community behave and have behaved during my entire tenure, that everyone's heart is here for the same reason, because they love this community. Everybody's opinions are completely different, which is awesome, but their, their hearts are in the right place, and they can disagree and still be civil human beings to each other. And that's Bucksport. That's, that is the, sets this community apart from, just look around. Read the papers, how people behave. That isn't a legacy that anybody wants for their community, and, and you don't have it here, and I hope you never get it. I, I have a feeling you won't. There's too many people that care too much to let that kind of thing happen, but... I, I will miss everyone, but I, I feel a hundred percent sure that you are in such good hands moving forward with all the people you have. You, you won't skip a beat. There's not... Jacob and his crew will move this community ahead ten times more than I did. I, I, that's my hope. I, you know, that's, I kinda started in a hole, but the, I, I... There's great things ahead for this community, and I, you have great leadership on the council, and you have extraordinary employees to help you get there.
We might not ever adjourn tonight's meeting.
No, we'll adjourn. No, that, because this is, many of you have seen, this is a dinosaur pin. This is my dinosaur pin. I wear it every day. 'Cause that's really what I kind of feel, I'm not extinct, but I'm close in terms of the, in replacing staff that... Young people with new ideas and energy and enthusiasm. We need to be open to letting them help Bucksport grow and do things that, that almost seventy-year-old me would have a harder time with and not have the skill set for. I wasn't born in a time where the, a computer was in my hand, uh, you know, or there was anything called the internet or any of those kind of things. So, oh, this is an applied thing. For the people who are now will be moving things forward, they grew up with it, you know? So they have the ability to do way more in many areas than I've done, and it will benefit the community. So I, I've left you younger staff overall, and, um, and you, you told me as one of your goals that you didn't want a cliff when I left. So you wanted a transition. You have a transition, so.
I really absolutely have you to thank for, 'cause you, your support for all of us as councillors right from day one, when you brought me in a five-inch binder full of every item that I'm gonna be dealing with for the next three years.
You say that with terror.
And you've, the key hiring, like we've discussed, the, the people you've put into the key positions. You've set us up to succeed with an amazing, amazing staff. That's why we're gonna succeed. And thank you for that. And I'll have more to say in the next couple of days.
Well, it's, it's, uh, this is a, I've worked since I was twelve. I've had a job since I was twelve that I had to go to, to do something. So as of Tuesday, when I don't have anywhere to go, that's my assigned thing. It's kind of odd, but I, I, I can honestly tell you, I'm not worried about that either. I've had a few calls from towns that could use a little help. I'm not going to ever manage another town. I, I have committed that I'm never doing interim. I'm not... If someone wants to get ready for an audit or needs some help with that kind of thing, I'm, I will do that, but I'm...
We have it literally on record.
No, they, it's absolutely... When I left Handen, I was going to do interim work. That's what I was going to do.
I know, that's why I said that.
Short term, ten years later, but anyway, that's, uh... Well, thank you all, and we, you know, we have a long agenda. I'm not gonna... Thank you for the flowers. They're lovely. I really appreciate it. I, I am more used to organizing these things than I am otherwise, but I appreciate you all. I promised myself I wasn't gonna cry about anything. I can cry all the way to Bangor. I, I, I respect you all too much, too.
Sue, just to, um, kind of piggyback off what you said yourself about the, the, this community and the, and the employees. Last year, when I decided I was gonna run the council, people who don't live here would say, "Why would you do that?" You know, and it never, I knew that this, this council, this town, and thank, and in big part thanks to you, would be a good team to be part of. So I appreciate all you've done.
It is a great team. That is, that's everybody, and you know what the great part is? I think virtually everybody that works for the town knows that, that this is a team. Everybody is the most pulling in the same direction and cares deeply about the... Everyone doesn't agree on everything, and that's what makes it even more beautiful. Don Houghton, rest his soul, used to argue with me. He said, "You know, Susan, geez, you have four to three votes. You have five to two votes. What is..." I'm like, "Okay, what's that?" And he said, "Well, why don't you make sure ahead of time that you have..." I said, "Because the people's business gets done in front of the people." And it's not pretty, but we have a diverse council, and we have a diverse, everybody in this town doesn't think the same. So if you think everybody sitting up here should think the same, that's wrong. We need all of the different diverse opinions in the community represented on this council, so all of the people are represented. But before he passed away, he, he had come around with the idea that I was never gonna be one that was trying to engineer a vote in the back room. It was, it's not always pretty, but we were gonna, and it hasn't always been pretty. But getting through most of it without... Anyway, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Because we haven't made her uncomfortable enough, um, before we move on, I would like a round of applause for our outgoing town manager. Thank you, everyone. And I love how uncomfortable this is.
I was hoping you would comment that people shouldn't talk so much.
Nope, not tonight.
That's safe for tomorrow.
Not gonna lie, folks, the rest of the meeting is, there's a couple of things that are pretty interesting, but it, the rest of the meeting is gonna pale in comparison to that, but we're gonna get through it anyway. Um, uh, the next item on the agenda is to consider the minutes of our previous meeting, uh, which is, was our regular meeting on June the twelfth, included in the packet, and I will assume everyone's had a chance to review that.
Yes.
Action note, crew.
Second.
Questions? Holes in favor? We have several items of correspondence. We have from Down East Transportation and Ridership Report.
Streaming is not working.
Rich? Uh, streaming apparently is not working, just so you know.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, we have our Down East Transportation Ridership Report from May. Uh, we have the police, a police call from Verona Island on June the seventh, and we have an Orland police call on June the twelfth. Any concerns, questions? We have, under discussion items, we have one, a request from Bucksport United Methodist Church to use map zero zero one, lot zero eight eight as a park. I believe that comes to the council from the Infrastructure Committee.
Correct.
Yes.
It does. Um, the committee talked about, um, the idea, there's, um, it's an unbilledable lot due to the, um, myriad of utility lines that crisscross it. And it was deeded to the Methodist Church, which it's my understanding, and I believe we have people here that can help, thank you, that might need it as an eventual parking area if development occurred at the mill site and, and the parking adjacent to the Methodist Church that required, that meant they lost some of that available parking. But since that does not appear to be an imminent issue, but, um, we don't have any, a passive green space park in that section of the community, that there would be maybe, and I, and, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that it would be a good place to have something where somebody's throwing things, they're gonna end up in the road, and kids are gonna get run out onto Route Fifteen. I, it's more of a picnic table and, as I said, passive green space, but that, um, it's, even though it's a, a, an unbilledable lot for all intents and purposes, it has a valuation, a property valuation of about a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, which is a high amount tax-wise for the church to, for a lot that it, it really, unless it eventually needs parking, isn't going to use, but the town could use as green space for a park. And so Infrastructure said they would, it should come forward, and, um, the council could decide whether to send it to recreation or, or...
One of, one of the, uh, topic points for infr- infrastructure was that that end of town, there's a lot of dog walkers, and there's really no seating, um, that end of town beyond, like, um, where the post office is. There's no benches or anything, so. And there's a lot of foot traffic. I live in that area.
Did the Infrastructure Committee get input from Director Gagin or our Public Works Director about crosswalks, safety, anything with that?
It'd be good to hear that now.
I think that the, the idea was that if this were to get some legs, that, that recreation or whatever process that went through developed would include that.
Okay.
And the point I brought up during the infrastructure was that if we're gonna do it, it needs to be treated just like any other park owned by the town of Bucksport, as far as rules, regulations. Even though this is not owned by the town, but...
Please. Yes, please.
My name's Travis Tarian.
Yep.
I'm the, uh, lead leader of the Bucksport United Methodist Church, and I'm preparing to, uh, actually fill Pete's shoes here soon. So, um, in discussing all these things, I guess my question would be, could we not just get, not that I don't appreciate what you're doing, because I think this is a great idea, but could we just not get a better valuation of the property and pay taxes on a, a more fair value of, of the property? If that would be something that, and then we wouldn't have to worry about what Steve was just talking about, and we wouldn't have to talk, you know, worry about what Edward was just talking about. Is that a simpler resolution as opposed to the one that's on the table?
As the treasure and tax collector, it have, can have by law zero impact into evaluations set on property. Nor can any of these people. They can abate taxes, but they cannot, cannot change a value. And the, I think that when I had asked that, that, where's Luke? When I had asked that that value had already been adjusted based on the fact that it's not buildable. I I'm, I'm just repeating what I was told, so if the council decided to abate a certain portion of taxes, it could do that and and then just have the church own it. But I I the the idea of it, that I had talked to Pete about it, being a green space and stuff, was that that would allow, then allow the town to abate a sig- you know, a significant amount of those taxes. Because without something to offset that, it's, they can't, I don't know if it'd really be defensible to return, to reduce the taxes if there wasn't some correspondence. Too many words, but that's the, the issue is that I can't, nor can anyone tell an assessor what a value is or to raise one or to lower, and I know people, most people don't understand this, but it's a, it's a legal issue. In that I, they can, they vote to raise them and I'm until Monday, spend them, and so you can't, we can't tell an assessor what a value, but that's entirely yeah, so can't change the value. And if they're gonna, if they were gonna consider abating it, they would I'm assuming, and it's not good to do that, that the council wants something in return for.
That's understandable. Yeah, no, and I get, I get all that. I was just.
Sort of where we are with it, and and that's why this is.
And so I I to better understand what this partnership would be is the church would remain owners of the property, pay a reduced tax because it's a shared public space, correct? In that if the church, we're worried about parking. So that at that day, if that comes up, is that gonna be difficult to, wh- what happens at that point? Is it difficult to reclaim the property so we could do what we need to do, or do we have to pay those taxes back till today?
I would think that if the town has MOUs with organizations for all sorts of things, that if the town were to have an MOU with the church for the use of that space as a park, until or unless you know, the parking was necessary, and then the church would have to give the town, I don't know, sixty days or whatever. The, there wouldn't be a a tax thing because the town would have had the benefit of the use for the time. And, you know, so that would have.
What committee best filters this? Are we thinking recreation?
Does it need another committee, do you think?
I think a plan is.
I I I would like, I'm very much so supportive of this. Let me get to the end and backtrack. I I would like to see this happen, but I'd also like to see it happen well and safely. And from what I know of the area, I think it's a great spot residentially, but it's al- is also close to Route fifteen. And I'm also too familiar with the traffic scenarios there, and I would very much so like the input of our public safety team of how that's implemented. That's what I'd like to see happen.
Yeah, that that could be all laid out in a recreation committee.
Yeah, yeah, and so I don't, I don't wanna make the process muddy. I don't wanna slow it down. I would just, I would like to move it along swiftly, but I'd also like to make sure that it's done well and safe.
I I'm I'm pretty sure the church has paid the taxes for the year finally, so I I I don't feel rushed anymore, but.
No, if if you worked through it in a committee and decided that this was or wasn't something that would work well for both of them, um, the the next assessment period's April first, so of next year. So if you.
My big concern is to lay it out for you is that there's, there's, when you implement a crosswalks, DOT there, they take into account line of sight, speed limits, and that corner when that rounds around Franklin and goes down where the church is positioned. There's gonna need to be a crosswalk there somewhere. What happens with signage and the distance and spacing by the math? That's gonna be appropriate for that scenario, but what's also gonna work in that space, that that all needs to be run through. To make sure that if people are gonna be walking back and forth, especially from the church and parking.
There it, there is currently, I think, a part, a uh. Currently, yeah, but but just that one spot, you know, on on Main Street, yeah.
So as long as it has the blessing of our public safety crew, then that's that, that's the only filter I I would like to see implemented from that.
I think the other thing to consider here is um just expectation setting moving forward between for both parties. I'm look, when I say that, I'm looking out for the town as well as the church, because let's say that parking need doesn't arise for ten years. You've had ten or however many years, probably at least eight um years of that being a park.
Correct, yeah.
Now we're, as the song goes, pave, you know, pave paradise and put up a parking lot. That's, and if we don't manage those expectations. Just saying, you know, all of a sudden, the people ten years from now are gonna have to deal with that, and and it would, it would, you know, it could make the church look.
Yeah, and and the church, we're we're very mindful. We wanna be about the community as well, you you know, and and so that, that's how this all really transpired is. We knew that the town always kind of wanted a buffer zone down there, and this, and it was just gifted to us. And um, and we need that little piece of parking that's right on that side. We absolutely need that. That's how we got our permits to open. Is because we had that, so it's important for us to maintain that, and um, we we wanna be good neighbors.
Oh, sure, absolutely.
And you are.
And so just, you know, services at ten thirty, I'll see you then. Thanks, guys.
So the pleasure of the council is to, for to the recreation committee, alright?
Can I stop you for a quick second?
Please.
For those at home that are trying to watch the meeting, you can't watch it through the website. You need to go to YouTube and put in Bucksport Town Meeting. The first meeting you'll see is Town Council Meeting, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, where Bucksport is encircling live. Click that button and it'll bring you to tonight's meeting. There's four or five YouTube channels when we get with IT. We'll eliminate them and only have the one.
Um, is, did he put this on the screen or is this, how do people?
I I have, I was able to get it on my computer and on my phone.
How does anyone watching from home right now that can't see this know?
If they can hear, can they, they probably can't even hear my voice. Um, I'd, I'll I'll put something on the town's website under alerts. I'll go send that out on that, where we have the July fourth closure for July third.
If you do that and Rachel, can you put something on Facebook? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, next, we have a public hearing, and it's a public hearing on amending the town of Bucksport's schedule of fees to adjust sewer service fees. Any questions, comments from the public? From the council? Close the public hearing without bashing the phone. Thank you, everyone. We will take that up shortly. We do not have any new ordinances to consider. We have a number of resolves under agenda items. The first is one I was looking forward to when I said earlier there wasn't much, but this is exciting. Uh, resolve twenty twenty-five dash seven two, appointing Kelly Herrick as Town Clerk and Registrar of Voters. Questions, comments? Do you feel that you are Sue's hire or Jacob's hire?
Gotta go Jacob on this one.
No, 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 that it's absolutely a hundred percent. It's been kind of an interesting dance the last several months about I deal with the current and the past, and Jacob deals with everything that's the future. And so the future is, I I'm not gonna hire, I'm not gonna write checks for Jac- Jacob to cash. He he hires the people that he feels will, so it's, I I will tell you, he's done an awesome job, but the.
Okay, good. Motion to approve that. We have a motion. Is there a second? Alright, Jacob, do you wanna say anything? Not to put you on the spot, but if you'd like to.
I would just say that that Kelly brings a lot of of experience, both municipals, she's worked for a number of communities in Hancock County. She's had um years of service at DMV, so um she has, she has a lot of good knowledge. She was waiting on customers on the counter the other night, telling them things that I don't even know. So I think I could learn a thing or two from her, for sure, so I think she's gonna be a very good hire, and I'm so pleased to have her on board with us.
Do you know how we can get in sooner for our real ID?
I know, that I don't know.
I do, I'll talk to you later.
We have a motion in a second. All is in favor? Opposed? Alright, it's official. Welcome aboard.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. In your first meeting, you got my last name right, so you're off to it. Uh, let's see, resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three. Actually, these are all pretty impactful. I'm approving the agreement between the town of Bucksport and Teamsters Local Union Number Three Forty for the Bucksport Fire Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions or comments? All is in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty twenty-five dash seven four, approving the agreement between the town of Bucksport and Teamsters Local Union Number Three Forty for the Bucksport Police Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five, approving the agreement between the town of Bucksport and Teamsters Local Union Number Three Forty for the Bucksport Public Works Department.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Questions? All is in favor? Opposed?
I'd just like to, please, to acknowledge the really good job that um our employees and the, at the union stewards, the groups did. It was a, it was an interesting negotiating period. Jacob did a great job. Rachel did a great job. But the the requests were reasonable and um there were compromises made on everything that was requested, so um I really appreciate the last contract that I had any input into or uh was, it it everyone was great in the in the process, and um again, not everywhere operates like that, but um I'm very proud of all the people that were involved in it, so thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six, approving the memorandum of understanding between the town of Bucksport and Bucksport Bay Healthy Communities Coalition. That was included in your package.
Second.
Motion in a second. Questions or comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-seven, approving the priority docking agreement between the town of Bucksport and American Cruise Lines Incorporated.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions or comments?
All the kinks have been worked out of this.
Yeah, we've gone back and forth with American Cruise Lines about this for a number of months now. Ran the initial agreement through uh the town attorney to work out any of the legalese, so to speak. The the high points of it, I included a a memo, and actually a representative from, this is a representative from American Cruise Lines. Um, in case you have any specific questions. The agreement that's before you is an initial fifteen-year agreement where American Cruise Lines will pay the town sixty thousand dollars a year for um priority docking. Where they must um, where they will submit their schedule to the town um by basically uh January thirty-one, um we would be required to honor those dates for them prior to um receiving any other bookings, and they would also pay us for um a per foot fee, um per vessel that stays uh for more than two hours over a twenty-four hour period. And so that's the, really the high points uh of of the agreement. Like I said, Eric is, uh, he's on the call with us if you have any questions for him, but.
There are, there are um escalators based on Consumer Price Index in these for the the annual fee and the per foot as well, so there will be fifteen year.
Very thankful everyone was able to negotiate a a deal to have that, yeah.
Yep.
Very much so.
Any questions for, I hope I'm saying his last name right, as somebody who has one of those, Dusel, Dusel? So, okay. Any question?
Can I just make a, may I make a quick comment?
Please.
Um, first off, I'd like to thank Sue for all her years of service. Sue, I don't know if you remember, but right after COVID, when we were trying to operate, you were very helpful in everything we were trying to do in twenty twenty-one. Um, the letters, the emails and and everything, so really appreciate everything you've done for the town over the years. And um, you know, uh, thank, thank you to the council for, you know, um, opening this agreement here and and hopefully, uh, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of it. We've appreciated the partnership um for for many years with Bucksport, and hopefully this just shows our commitment to Bucksport um for years to come.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Making sure there are no questions. Alright, I believe we do have a motion in a second.
Correct.
All is in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dusel.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Yep. Alright, uh, resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight is approving a lease agreement between the town of Bucksport and Bucksport Square Apartments. That too is included in your package, and I believe that is a continuation of a conversation from this time.
It is. This is this, the, the um upgraded lease from the senior center that we um, that we lease and settles any claims on fire leases that uh were not operated in exactly the way that lease was written.
And you think this is the best, most reasonable option?
The, the town has provided a senior center and um since nineteen ninety-two. The designated space, and in looking around, when this whole thing started to, you know, what are we doing? We looked at the ideas, you know, if they could share space with something else, but but truly, the it's used nearly seven days a week for some activities there. We have a part-time director that's there, but even when he's not there, it's used for other activities by groups that are part of the senior center. We invested in a fifteen-passenger bus for them to have activities there. And and making them homeless or or bounce from place to place would be very difficult for them to sort of maintain the the activities that they have. And and truly, the the other lease was archaic and um this is pretty clear, um, the the rent is um very reasonable for the size, space that it is, and the commercial kitchen that it has and those kind of things. It's ten years, not twenty, and so it's isn't, it's quite a long term, but it and as I said, it settles without litigation. The issues that were raised were the last basis. At this point, anything that can be settled without litigation is a good thing because we had too many lawyers. Not that I have anything against lawyers, but I. It's an expensive way to
Did we have a motion yet? Or didn't?
We have a motion on this one.
Motion to approve.
Put a motion in a second. I'll make sure there are no any que- no questions. All is in favor? Opposed? Resolve twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine, um, back from the subject earlier from the public hearing, which is to amend the town of Bucksport's schedule of fees to adjust the sewer service fees. The council like to proceed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Move in a second. Questions? All is in favor, opposed, cue. Resolve tw- twenty twenty-five dash eighty, which is authorizing tax anticipation borrowing in the amount of three million dollars.
All is amended.
Second.
Motion, uh, there's a motion in a second.
Is this gonna be just a yearly? I just ask, uh, what's our current rainy day fund?
Well, if the auditor would ever come, if it's for audit, I would feel better about saying that. I think that the last time I looked, it was one point two was undesignated fund in the, yeah, on our general ledger.
Okay.
I think that's the number. But it's, it's not enough at all.
I get it, yeah.
Cover expenses.
This is what we're doing, gave us a rather common practice.
It is.
It wasn't for Bucksport for about how many years until last time?
That's because they had a mill paying forty to fifty percent of it and could amass the kind of rate.
Most communities would have had to start doing this in twenty fifteen. We waited ten years.
Yeah.
So. Until we develop an income, this is how we're gonna have to operate.
Yeah.
Nothing to add. Uh, we do have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? All is in favor, opposed, thank you.
Jacob, this needs to go be done in the packet to the, we have to send this back to our attorney so that he can, but.
Doesn't need me.
It was, no, it's not, it's, it needs to be signed by the town clerk and um crunched and all that and then sent back, which is, I'm doing tomorrow, which is why I was I'll leave this up for Kelly if you can.
Another item I was looking forward to this evening is the town manager's report. That you have in front of you and I will view all the time you'd like.
Well, no, I'm not going to read three pages of things, four, no. It is, what, this is my last manager's report here and what I did was I went back over the agendas from the time I started in August of two thousand fifteen forward to just remind myself a little bit about some of the things that, that the town had had done over and above or, or in addition to all the things that were statutorily required to do. Like, all the departments do their normal work, but you know, the despite the fact that the mill closed, we built a fourteen-million-dollar secondary treatment plant that was built on time, on budget and left enough in contingency to build a solar array which offsets about a third of the cost of electricity for that facility. And we were the first community in Maine to ever request that permission to do that with contingency funds and and we're the only one who's done it since, so we and this one is a, is a big deal for me because in, in the funding stream for this facility, it was the town spent five hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then the town borrowed seven point eight million dollars and then that got spent and the last money was grant money. And so if you don't spend grant money, you can't put it against your debt service, you can't do any of those kind of things. And so we had almost four hundred thousand dollars and and I didn't just wanna trickle it away. We could buy a pump, we could buy trucks, we could, you know, and, and in five years, all that's gone. But investing in this infrastructure which we own, the the power array is, this is behind the meter. The, the solar power that we have there is operating the plant before it hits the so it's, and I know it might be contentious, this isn't a net metering arrangement, this isn't, this is, we own the equipment. It offsets our, about a third of our power costs, which is huge for a facility like that, so that's just we did interesting things. We've done interesting things for ten years that probably not everybody has done. We've done heart and soul and we've done recreational planning and we've done um we've done so much to try and become more transparent, video streaming and putting all our packets on the, on our website. So you can see every, whatever we're doing, you can see it happening, like it or not. I mean, it's it's, it's out there, but all my pages of, of, are all characterized by we got a canine. We, we staffed public safety in a way that hadn't, we took steps so this community is a place that people wanna come, they wanna live, they wanna do things. We're taking care of our infrastructure. We are paying attention to riverize and just and really proud of this whole place because I didn't all the people, this council approving these things and all the people who did the work have made this very worthwhile. I mean, we've had more than ten million dollars in grants, most of it match that we've invested here. That's we don't have a grant writer. Everybody writes. Whoever wants something, whatever department needs something writes grants. Rich has written a gazillion. That's a big number, but I'm sure he feels like it. So, uh, there were some copies there and I, I hope people read it. I, I just hope you really set up well to move forward, but you've done a lot of stuff in ten years to help you get there, which is to be a community that's willing to go do things even when nobody else was doing anything. How many times did we say that during the pandemic and stuff? We can't stop. We can't not do things. If you're not moving forward, you're going backwards. There's no such thing as we're gonna get there and stay there, cuz you can't. If you're not moving forward, you're moving backwards and
Couple of those Zoom meetings felt like they were going backwards.
Excuse my language, yeah, but we, we did our best not to we never stopped. This, this office never stopped serving people. We did it in some pretty freaking interesting ways. I mean, we were taking stuff to the doors, I but we weren't a community that went home and waited for the we had everybody delivering meals that all over town to the seniors. I, I, I mean the other thing that we've done and, and council here can say, so we've been in, built a network here with all of our sister agencies, the schools and the homeless shelter and the medical center and uh, you, any local organization, we, we have, have a service network that has a Zoom call monthly that triages issues. It's a, uh, nobody has that.
It's so impressive and, and I think that, that's the part of Bucksboard I think that makes us a leader because those meetings, this was in my old job, where sometimes we'd tackle the substance use uh challenge that we were facing with um in our community or that we still are COVID, uh, it was because of that group and we had uh public safety at the table, the Bucksboard Health Center. And so many people from different walks of life that nobody was really left behind during COVID. The, the um, the testing at the homeless shelters are because of that group and the health center and public safety helping us learn how to do Narcan and things like that. So it was really impressive, but all under the leadership of of our town manager. Um, and we were really the only community that was doing something like that. And so many people from other communities came in to join us, like from Ellsworth, they came to our meeting to present and but it was unique to Bucksport.
Anyway, so it, it, I, I hope to take a few minutes just to read it, just to, as a reminder, I mean I'm, I was going through those, I thought, whoa, what were we thinking?
Jacob, is this posted on the town website yet or can it be? Okay, thank you.
Just as a I titled it, so what did we do? I guess, I think we did a lot, so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Sue. Questions or comments from town manager?
Could go on and on. We won't.
Counselor Rankin will be upset, so go. Just keep it short.
Uh, discussion of items not on the agenda for the council or the public, we will start with the public this evening. Mr. Chapman.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name's Ralph Chapman. I come before you this evening as the chair of the uh, Climate Resilience Committee, uh, which has been working in cooperation with the Conservation Committee, whose members uh are, were not able to be here this evening to make a request uh of, authorize uh, one or both of these town committees to issue a request for information from potential vendors. Particularly, uh, uh, the, the, the subject comes up because of the Emerald Ash Borer problems the Conservation Committee has been focused on. And they're looking to get pricing information for identifying ash trees and uh for, for identification and tagging. Uh, they want some numbers to be able to inform them of what the cost would be if they make recommendations to the town or if they're able to apply for funding that would cover s- some portion of, of those costs. And so the question that I'm bringing to you is whether the committee can be authorized to issue a request for information or a request for quotations from potential vendors of those services.
Uh, I would think, uh, yes, with the uh filter and authority of the town manager with the town's request on it. That would be my thought process to have that filtered through.
Mr. Chapman reached out about this. Um, the agenda was already out when he asked about this. And they're looking to get a price for what it would cost them to do certain things. And he said you would need to have a, a normal process that we go to, through which is advertising, but our local way to do that is not available anymore, other than Ellsworth American. And the other thing that we do is we send it to vendors that we know provide those services directly to them a- as well in order to get pricing. This doesn't authorize hiring anybody to do anything. It's only a request for information so that they can figure out what their work would entail, if they're gonna do that. And I, I did suggest it come because we couldn't, the agenda was already done when he
Our, our advertising budget is, to go through that channel is already tight and allocated and had discussions with our code enforcement about that, about how to try to broaden our scope and that's a whole nother topic. What would you recommend for doing a good job to still accomplish that, to make sure that process is correct?
They have, have another committee in the back, any additional comment?
No, I'm looking at the person who would, Jacob would be the response, the reporting to person.
The committee has ideas as to who we did on this type of works. I would think the most effective way is just to send it to those
Can I jump in for a minute?
Please.
Chair of the Conservation Committee, I'm the floor.
And Ralph didn't realize I was here tonight. Um, we are working with them um in the hopes of applying for a grant, the GOPIF grant, and using those monies to deal with this problem. But we, in order to, to get it, we need uh some idea of what kind of figures we would be looking at for an inventory of just the ash trees that would be in danger around ball fields, parks, places where the public would be in, in danger um as these trees start to fall and so forth. And Emily has been trying to get prices and has been told, you know, this is too broad a request, so we've narrowed it down as best we could. Rich made us some maps and really helped us with that, uh, of just the areas we really need to look at. But we can't apply for the grant until we have some idea what we're looking at for a cost for a forester or a arborist to do the work.
So you'd be doing like a request for a quote on behalf of the town, essentially is what you're asking.
I believe that's how it should be done. And then we can put those figures into our grant application.
Any objections?
No objections.
Is that something we need to take a formal vote on?
Well, I think that you can authorize them to do without
Yeah, well, cuz there's no money.
The consensus of the council as to, cuz you're not obligating any money.
Right, that's why I was going with that.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, sounds like the council is okay with.
Yes, I'd, I'd just like the town manager looked into the process, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but there's more action at the EV chargers. I've been promoting the crap out of them on social media, even Face, not Facebook, Myspace, do you remember Myspace? So, yeah, I know, right? I've been going all over the place promoting, uh, telling people if you wanna come to Bucksport and charge your car. I've been on the Plug Share Community Outreach uh message boards. And I've been calling into different radio stations and, you know, saying, hey, we have a five charging stations, find us on Plug Share and so I think it's been like twelve to thirteen days of like nonstop use, day and night and stuff like that, so. It's getting busy, folks, so, it's awesome, anyway.
Keeping with the theme of tonight's meeting, I just want to remind the public that there's an open house for town manager Lasard on Monday here upstairs at the town office from nine to one. And we hope to see everybody there.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jacob.
Anyone else?
Pretty soon, you don't get to fire him.
I know, I hired him. The first time.
Anyone from the council? Uh, actually, I did have something I wanted to say really briefly, um I'm glad he's standing in the doorway to prompt my memory, but I would like to, on behalf of the council, um congratulate uh, several of our, all of our sports teams on a, on a really good spring season. But in particular, several of the um, the teams that brought home state championships in recent weeks um would be the girls' track team who had an exceptional season um, as well as the uh girl's softball team coached by um Mr. Otella.
The PVC coach of the year.
That, that, that's right, the PVC coach of the year. Give you the opportunity to speak, but I will anticipate that if you do, you will give all of the credit to your girls. And I think probably a lot of the credit is due to their performance. They are an exceptional group, but um, they are, been led by someone who uh, who's really, really committed um to athletics in this town. If you followed athletics in this town at all, I will speak briefly for a minute. Um, you will know that the boys' soccer team in Bucksport for years um struggled. And then it didn't. And I would tell you that it didn't in large part because of Rich, even though he never coached the boys' soccer team at Bucksport High School, but he built a program at the middle school. Um, and so when you, when you see someone do that type of thing and then take over um uh, the helm of this girl's softball team uh this year for the full year and then go win the state championship. Um, I think it goes without me having to say that you have an exceptional person. Um, I think it goes without me having to say that you have an exceptional person, um, leading um, a group of athletes and so. Well done. Yep.
Nineteen and one this year?
Yes, sir.
Nineteen, and I know that one is probably gonna eat at you, but um, that was the best loss that your team could have had.
Exactly what I said to someone. I didn't sleep because the year before we were thirteen and one of the last loss was the state champ, the only loss was the state championship. So for one year I replayed that through my head, so once, once we had that loss. I really did take a lesson out of that and I immediately implemented it the next game. We set up a great scrimmage with Scout Gegan and then the girls went on a hitting tear from there, they hit, they fielded, they ran. They played very hard and they brought home some hardware.
I'll I'll add a comment that uh, I live in the area of the softball field and uh. When I'm out and about walking the dog or whatever, I uh, I get to hear a lot of uh, a lot of Coach Rotella's statements and. A lot of what he's up to and. He's the real deal, we're we're uh, we are very blessed to not only have him as the coach, but as a town employee in the way that uh. He's able to merge both into doing everything he does and it's it's a big deal for us, so. Yeah, thank you for all you do, Rich, good job.
Well done, Rich.
Absolutely, uh, just close with, we have a number of people who work for the town that also um, take on a role like that, as I'm sure you know. Um, our head of public safety is varsity football coach and I, and Sue highlighted that in her, so what have we done report that. We, and I think she spoke to her best when she spoke about community, so I think that's a.
I can hear Coach Gegan from my house too, but that's further, that's also further away, that's a different, it's a different leadership style.
And we can't repeat it.
It might have been a time or two I heard Coach Gegan from Bridge Street, but we won't. Alright, thank you, everyone, uh, committee assignments and scheduling.
Recreation committee.
Recreation committee, our next meeting is July the tenth. So everyone is aware.
Should that be a six o'clock? Should that be a six o'clock at nine one? Should it be an hour before, cuz there, cuz there's probably quite a bit to discuss.
The next rec committee meeting is September third. That's a, that's a daytime. It's a daytime one, it's a recreation committee.
Yep.
It meets quarterly.
Do we wanna move it to infrastructure? Yeah.
Yeah, and it would just, cuz we, yeah, we can put it back to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
And can we make sure that we have the department heads there for the meeting as well, so we can move that process along, although they're not in a hurry.
So let's do six. Yep, okay.
I don't know why I'm taking notes.
Just being curious.
You're invited.
Uh, any other committees before the next meeting? Anything else? Thank you, everyone. Well, if there is nothing else, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.